Begun.
Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us for our April 16th, 2024 Town Council meeting. I would like to officially call this meeting to order at 6:00 P. M. Madam Clerk, could you please give a roll call?
Yes, ma'am. Councilman Winkler.
Present.
Councilman Trolinger.
Present.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward.
Present.
Councilman Jenkins.
Present.
Mayor James, you have a quorum.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. If I, if you all could, please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Looking over the agenda, if there is someone who would like to make a motion to approve the agenda as presented, I will entertain that.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I move that we adopt the April 16th, 2024 meeting agenda as presented.
Thank you so much. I will, is there a second?
Second.
All right, I love it. Second, third, and fourth. Any questions, any discussions? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And for the approval of the minutes for the April 9th, 2024 meeting, if I could enter, I will entertain a motion for that. Maybe someone that was there.
Madam Mayor, I would, would make a motion to approve the minutes as presented dated April the 9th, 2024.
Thank you so much. Do I have a second?
Seconds.
Wonderful. Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That brings us down to our first and only proclamation this month. And this is a very important proclamation, as they all are. We have so many volunteers that help us on our committees and help make this town just a little bit better. And we would like to recognize them. So this is for National Volunteer Week, which is coming up. So whereas every community member can affect positive change with any volunteer action, no matter how big or small, and whereas 1.7 million Marylanders volunteer each year, providing 181.9 million hours of service and an estimated economic value of more than $4.3 billion. And whereas thousands of volunteers working in our community utilize their time and talent daily to make a real difference in the lives of children, adults, and the elderly. And whereas volunteers can connect with local community service opportunities through hundreds of local nonprofit organizations. And whereas experience teaches us that government by itself cannot solve all of our nation's social problems. And the giving of oneself and service to another empowers the giver and the recipient. And whereas our volunteer force is a great treasure. And during this week, we recognize their commitment to serving the greater good. And now, therefore, we, the Council of the Town of La Plata proclaim April 21st to April 27th, 2024, as National Volunteer Week in the Town of La Plata in appreciation of the work, commitment, and dedication of volunteers, and urge all citizens, regardless of age, to become involved and volunteer in the community. And this is on behalf of the Council of the Town of La Plata, myself, Mayor Janine James, Councilman David Winkler, Councilman Matthew Trolinger, Councilwoman Evelyn Bryant Ward, and Councilman Dave Jenkins. And I just want to say thank you to everyone who does volunteer to make our town just a little better than it was before they volunteered. So you have a week that we are recognizing you. So thank you so much for that. On, next on our agenda is a public comment. If you would like to, if you would like to speak, we ask that you state your name, whether you live in the Incorporated Town Limits. And if you could limit your comments to three minutes, that would be appreciated. So I see someone coming on down. You're the first contestant. Make sure the mic is on, please, Ms. Greer.
Thank you all. And I don't think my comments will take three minutes. Sue Greer, on behalf of Stagecoach La Plata, and I do have an office in the Incorporated Town Limits located on Howard Street, La Plata, Maryland. And I, again, I'm just going to, I think the Town Council knows my concern. I think all of you have received my letter and the attachments to the letter. And I am just true, truly knowing how much work you've put into it, how much work has been put into it over the past couple of years with staff requesting your intervention and assistance. And trust me, I do not want to find myself in the position of having to come to you and ask for that. I looked at a couple of notes today, and I looked with respect to this Town Council. And this Town Council knows it goes beyond this Town Council. But I looked at notes from a meeting that we had in October of 2021 to try and move the matter forward. And they really reflect the agreement that you all approved almost two and, almost, what, two and a half months ago now. And as a show of Stagecoach's commitment and good faith, we executed that agreement and returned it to you to show that we are committed, that we are working in good faith. Now I'm asking for your assistance to have that reciprocated and have the agreement returned with signatures, whether it be the individual that you authorized or whether you authorized someone else to execute that agreement. And I know that each and every one of you outside of this forum have your own professional lives. And I know the diligence that you exercise in your professional lives. And I know the diligence that you exercise in administering the affairs of the town. So I'm just asking you to, again, with humility and respect, ask you to exercise that same sort of diligence in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Greer. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? All right. Thank you very much. Coming up next is the FY '25 Budget Calendar Amendment. All yours, Ms. Larson. I think it's a Ms. Larson show today, huh?
Good evening, Council. So, um, we've had to revise the budget calendar due to the budget not being, consensus not becoming with the budget last council meeting. So we pushed everything back one week. So tonight, we're doing the general fund budget to figure out what you guys want to keep in and balance this budget. And then on Tuesday, we'll be doing the, Tuesday, April 23rd, we'll be doing the enterprise budget. So everything's been pushed back. So we just need a consensus with the new budget calendar due to the delay in the general fund budget.
All right. Thank you very much. I will open the floor for Council to ask any questions on this one item. Do you have any questions about amending the budget?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Larson, I, I'm just taken aback by all of the information that we received. It was my understanding at the last meeting in March when this was presented that you could plug in, you know, the COLA information to see where we landed and that you were going to have discussions with the department heads to see what could be adjusted. Looking at the fact that the Police Department probably won't have a shovel in the ground in 2025, why would we budget a third or more of that expense as opposed to budgeting what it would cost to do the study? And then looking forward in 2026, '27 for the actual planning for the Police Department. So I, I, I don't think that, me as a council member, I can balance your budget. I think that between you as our treasurer and your team members and the Town Manager, something has to be presented to us that we can approve. Our priorities, I think we've stated those. The questionnaire, the survey that went out was very confusing. I, some of the things I didn't even know were up to us to prioritize. So they were not on my list of priorities, so I didn't prioritize them. I made them a one. The things that we talked about, that we said was priority, I gave them a high rating. So here we stand, asking the Town Council, Town Council to make a decision on line items outside of the budget without knowing what the impact of that line item would be within the budget. And that's, that, I just, I, I find myself unable to do. I, I just can't give that type of guidance, not knowing what the impact would be on the bottom line if I prioritize all of those things that were submitted to me. And that's how I feel as the Councilwoman. I can't do it.
So before we have a response, that was eloquently said. But I'm just looking to see if that's, if that calendar's okay with you. You hopped over. And I was like, I'm not, she's on a roll. I am not.
The question of the calendar.
Okay.
She said priorities. And so that's what I was responding.
But that was really well said. So we're going to slice and put it to the next one. But any, any questions on the calendar? And we're good to go with that? All right. Consensus to move the calendar as presented.
Just, just a question about the calendar, and I'm sorry. So because Charles County has to publish our tax rate, we have to do it by the end of May, as I remember from last year?
Actually, they want it by mid-May. I have to give them everything by mid-May.
Again, I just, it just, I get it, and I'm not criticizing. I just have a problem that sometime we have the, the tail wagging the dog. Like, we're kind of squinting to a system or a process where we're frankly, I feel rushed and kind of overwhelmed. So, and I'll just let it go at that.
But are we okay with the calendar? I think we all need some free coffee here. We're good with the calendar, Mr. Town Manager here. We have a consensus that we have approved the calendar. Now, so not to, like, like, jump around, but now let's go into the next part.
Can you say it again?
That's okay. We've got it on a loop. It's on a loop.
All right. So we are now on the memo that you sent out for the budget priorities. And as I said, that Councilwoman Bryant Ward really said it very nicely about how this is, I think we are a little bit further in the weeds than we should be. And this should be, it should be presented pretty much a, and I love that you're trying to get our opinion, but we're policies and procedures and ultimately the budget. It should be up to the Town Manager and the Department Head and the Treasurers to, the Treasurer to kind of finish this up. So with that said, I was buying you time there, Corinne, and now it's all yours.
The memo was actually to give you guys information. And so I guess there's not really clear on how this worksheet works. So I had provided this worksheet based on the, well, actually, let me start from the beginning. There are several objectives we need to complete today. One is to determine what the majority of council wants in this budget, additional from what our current operating are. That means the positions, the benefits, the COLA. And we need to determine how we're going to fund it, if it's going to be bridged by fund balance or is it going to be, is taxes going to be increased to cover this additional expense? We also need to determine if there's going to be a change in tax rate. Also, the capital assets, are we going to discuss them? Or should that be put off until fall, having a better idea of where we're at with some of the situations that have come up? And lastly, we need to leave with a balanced budget. So on the spreadsheet, on the spreadsheet, we have our budgeted revenues. We have the expenses based on our current operations. And then down here, we have the items that were identified in the survey based on the operating expenses. I did not put the capital. But when you put these items in these columns, it shows you what the effects are. So by adding two new positions, by adding a 3% CFA, 3% 457, having employees pay 10% of healthcare premiums, adding health insurance and retirement, it's going to increase the deficit to $616,000. And here, we have any assigned ARPA balance, but none of these items would have fit into that category. And then the tax rate. So if you were to do the tax rate, it would be 3.75%. It would show you what you need, which is 3.75%. So this is, this worksheet, based on what you want, it, this is what I wanted you guys to look at, to see where your priorities fall and the effects on the budget. And what we're trying to find out is if an IT specialist is absolutely necessary and you want that in the budget, are we going to fund it with taxes? Or are we going to fund it with fund balance?
So while we're going through this, if I could make a statement, this is a lot. I, I think that you did a fabulous job on this. And I think that you did, you included us in a whole lot. I feel like I could almost be a treasurer, and I have no desire to be a treasurer. What I am, and I, I really do echo Councilwoman Bryant Ward's statement, is that we trust you. I can see where you're coming from, saying, hey, what do you guys want? I want a budget that comes to me that I can go, cool, what did you cut? And I still don't see any operating expenses that have been cut, which I could give you a list, but most of the people that work here, they don't vote for me anyway. So it would be one of those things that, I'll cut the budget, but I don't think that's fair to us. We're here as part-time, and we're policies and procedures. You guys are operating with your Town Manager as the head of, in charge of operating. We don't know exact, I don't know exactly what you need. Everybody's going to ask for that latte when they should be drinking black coffee. So what can we trim down? For me, I think that capital needs to be discussed in the fall. And we need to sit there and we need, because all of this is stuff that isn't a 911. If it's a 911, it comes to us. And I don't think, with the exception of maybe a policy or procedure not being followed, we have denied anything because it is crucial to the running of our town, if it, if it comes to us. So this might be where we spend a full day together and go through all of that and find out how to fund that. With personnel, we would all like to do more, you know, have more. If that is necessary, then that's necessary. The COLA, the, all the perks, if those are necessary, then they're necessary. I, I want to take care of our employees, but I also don't want to, 11,000 people coming at us because we're raising taxes. We have to balance a budget. And if you have given, the Town Manager has given each department directions to stay in this, and if we exceed it by a little bit, that's expected. But if we're going out here and we should be here, that should be, that should be cut and skinny before it gets to here. And that's my opinion. I should be only looking at, yeah, okay, we can do a little bit of an increase. But I do not have the appetite in this climate now where federally they're raising taxes, our state are raising fees, and it's going to impact us. The cost of food, the cost of living has gone up. I do not have the appetite to raise taxes, to balance a budget, where I think we can cut in order to balance a budget. And that's just, that is just me, so.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I, I have a different approach. For over 20 years, we've not raised taxes. We have, the town has bore the burden of the growth of the town on its own. We, we've not raised taxes, we've not asked the residents to participate. I'm not going to say that we, what we do or don't need. IT, I can't imagine how we would continue to function without, without IT support. With everything that we, we have depends upon technology. I can't imagine, you know, us not having someone in-house as opposed to having someone part-time come whenever they can to address emergent and urgent needs. So I can't say that I would not add an IT specialist. Do we need another police officer? We have the support of the county. When we have issues, the county's pretty much present on big, big issues. But I can't tell the chief that he doesn't need another police officer. I don't know the rationale for it. I think the chief, I think Director Stahl, I think our Town Manager, Assistant Manager knows what we need from an operations standpoint. Ms. Kennedy has taken control of our HR. She knows what it takes to have additional staffing. That's got to be something Department Heads come to a consensus on. What do you really need in this fiscal year coming up? And if we get to the point where this is what we really, really need, we've got to have it. And we have a deficit, then taxes have to be raised. The county had no problems raising taxes multiple times, and, and the town still blames us for that. The residents think that the bill they get comes from the town. And I've sent an email this today and said, it does not. That bill you got had nothing to do with the town. We haven't raised your taxes. So if the county can continue to grow and expand and build and raise taxes for our residents that are residents of the county, then the town has got to be able to gain the support of the residents with an increase in taxes. And our increase would not look anything like what the county looks like. And so it's time, 20 years plus, it's time if it has to happen. We are providing the services. We want to provide excellent services to our town residents, and we can't do it on our backs.
Thank you. I, I just have a couple of, some questions, please, if I could. So in the worksheet, I think it's dated the 12th that you sent us. So, and you, and green, you've highlighted under the personnel issues, the 457 employee contribution, everybody, the 10, 90% employee health insurance premium, and then the healthcare and retirement. So that's one, it's three separate costs, but it, so what does it, I guess, what does the total accumulated package? I mean, what does that mean for, for every employee? Police too, and?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes. So this, the 10% slash 90%, right now, the town pays 100% of health insurance. What that was meant to do is give you guys an option, should employees take on some of the costs that the towns paying on their behalf to help reduce the deficit. So that was the purpose of that one. The 457, that is a retirement plan in addition to the current pension we have. And there were options for just the public works and PD, there was the pension. But that one had at least three council members selecting that one. And that's how that one ended up. Same thing with the healthcare and retirement. But if you look, if you want to know the net of those three items, then it is $133,000. Because you would be increasing expenses in two areas and decreasing expenses in another area.
All right. And then there are, there are two, what was called enhanced pension plans, which I assume came out of the Bolton Study in 20?
Yes.
23, specifically three, Plan Two and Three. So, and I know we did the survey, but I guess I'm just, I'm struggling to know why, why one of these can't be plugged in. And I did that on your spreadsheet by removing those three green items, and I plugged those on separate spreadsheets.
It was all the same.
I, I.
Yeah. But, and if, if majority of council wants that in this year, you can plug it in, you can see, I mean, I can plug it in right now.
No, I already did it too. And, and I mean, I did it, and I took my own notes. But, but, but I guess I'm just, to be honest, I'm just perplexed because we spent, past councils spent a lot of time on this, and very bluntly, nothing really happened, okay? Then we took it up, and we probably spent, I'm going to guesstimate and be conservative, maybe a year to 18 months. And we did the Bolton Report. But yet we refer back to a, a previous study in 2022. You know, I, I'm just confused that if, and I'm speaking for me, that if we spent $65,000 on the Bolton Study and then we, you know, spent exhaustive hours looking at and trying to understand it, and now we don't even want to consider it to be part of the budget, even though, and I understand, it's a big hit. I get it. I, I did the numbers if I did it right. So I, I guess I, I just want to express that frustration for me that, and again, I mean, both the mayor and Councilwoman Bryant Ward have eloquently indicated different elements that I support. But I also support, at the end of the day, it is true, we haven't done anything, well, we haven't raised taxes in 20 years. So that is kind of like, wow. And that, but that's not to say, as the mayor said, that, you know, we just don't do it willy-nilly, or we want to do it willy-nilly. But I, I mean, if, so we've grown over 16%, we're over two, 3,000 people between census. So we're now up to 11,000 people, and we probably will grow more. And yet we have a community that's accustomed to a certain level of services. And we've done a strategic plan, and we did a pay study, and then we did a staff study because we know we need these kinds of things. So now to come up to the budget, and we kind of, I'm probably oversimplifying. So now, now we're just going to kind of turn our eye and forget about it and not think about not only this budget, but future budgets on what the impact is on our residents, but also to maintain the services they expect now and in the future. And so I, I just have to express that frustration for me. And, and, and again, that's not to say I don't appreciate all the hard work and diligence you guys do because it's a lot of stuff, I get it. But I'm just kind of confused here. And, and frankly, I feel a little rushed to do this because I got to do it by a certain date. I just wish we had more time.
I'm not going to belittle or belabor this, this discussion back and forth. But I think that's where, if you sat down and said, we got a piece of pie, and everybody's fighting over the piece of the pie, and we're going to act as judge and jury over who gets what percentage of that pie. But we got to know what exactly it is you want, you can, you can't live without, what you could and what you possibly. And I think we're all saying the same thing that, you know, you, the way I interpret it, and again, I'm just speaking for myself, but I think we're all kind of saying the same thing, is that you want us to tell you so that the blame is on us for, and, and let's, I mean, let's be real honest with it. Let's, let's call it what it is. And, and I look at it as you need to present me with some, some legitimate, here's what I want to do, yes or no. And, and at some point, we make a decision, we get it down to three or four items that we then have a discussion about instead of, I don't know, it looks like there's, there's 91 lines in it, so there's probably about 45 different items to, to, you know. And we could be here, if we, if you want to go line by line, I'll take my coat off and we'll go line by line. But we'll be here till 1:00 in the morning. And I don't think anybody wants to be here till 1:00 in the morning.
No, thank you for that.
It's a Siemens camera, that camera for the parks and all the buildings. I wanted it in the budget when we. I wanted it in the budget when we said we wanted it to come back.
Not, not originally. But that was on top ten. Do you have a comment?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. Uh, thank you, Ms. Larson. I think Councilman Jenkins being perplexed about where the Bolton study was within the process. I'd just like your response on that. Just, it just didn't fit or it just wasn't preferable or?
No, it's up to you guys if you want, what you want to do. I mean, there are several options and those options, nobody seemed to be interested in Plan One, so it didn't even come up in this list. But there was the Plan Two, Plan Three, there was four fifty-seven. Leaps, nobody seemed to be interested in during the discussion. So certain things were kind of removed to have a list where we could kind of focus on what you guys as a group, as a majority wants. I mean, if you guys want a balanced budget, I could go and say, let's cut out everything and let's continue with the current operations we're doing. Because that's what this fifty-four thousand is the deficit of currently what we're currently doing. The other items were items that have been identified that we need to enhance our services, such as the I T position to help simplify some of the problems that we're coming up with. And if that's a priority of the council, we can say, okay, let's put this in the budget. We could fund it with fund balance, see how the revenue is, bridge it this time. See what happens with Pine Grove, what the revenues trends are. My, my concern is the revenue trends are not keeping up with our expense trends. That's my biggest concern. And you put in an operating cost, especially an operating cost that once you have in there, you cannot take out. You're stuck with it and you are obligated to fund that operating expense. That is a concern and that's why these are in there. And it's not like any of this goes away. So say that you guys decide, we're just going to do an I T position, we're going to do a COLA. We're going to bridge it with fund balance for this year. And then next year, we're going to look up and see if we can give additional benefits or additional positions. That at least gives you an idea of how your revenues trends are going because right now they're not keeping up with your expenses. And with the recent information about the water, it's, it's a concern. And again, I went back and looked at our revenues and recalculated slightly different from what I've done previously on the trends. And now there's with the water that, that can affect the trends.
Okay. And I don't want to echo what everybody else has said, but I think Councilman Winkler made a good point last week in looking at the survey. And just kind of echoing Councilwoman Bryant Ward, we're kind of shooting in the dark a little bit on a lot of them. Because while I think it's been pretty obviously communicated by council and having our discussions about future retirement benefits for town staff, the tornado siren, you know, some of these items on here, they're a little bit out of context. And I mean, I know I voted for a couple of these where, hey, it sounds good. But if I'm, you know, I, I would never have said, these are priorities given we want to do these other things we've already stated. And I know it's chicken and egg, right? You want to know what our priorities are. We want to know what the priorities are for department heads, for the town, to be able to assess what needs to go first or, or not go yet. But, you know, to use a phrase Director Stahl frequently uses, this is a major challenge, right? Like, we want to rely on the experts in the field, as Councilwoman Bryant Ward typically says, is like, we rely on you guys to advise us because we're not here on the day-to-day. We, you guys know what you need and, you know, I just, you know, if we're, if we're looking at fifty-three, previously we would just, fifty-three or fifty-four, we would just cover that with fund balance, right?
Yeah.
I mean, that would not be considered a balanced budget, but it wouldn't be. Right. Right.
The revenues were not calculated as aggressively as I did here for the rural property tax and the income tax. So if we have, if this grows, it would be, it grows, the more I would be concerned about covering the fund balance.
Without muddying the water, unintended, okay? You said that the recent water information that we have changes the numbers yet even still, or could?
Yeah. So I, I, what I did is when I looked at the real property tax revenue amounts, I took the trend. I looked at how much it increased from the twenty-two to twenty-three, what I expected to increase in twenty-four. And I used that percentage to increase what the county gave me. In previous years, what I did is I took what the county gave us and I added in permits that have been approved, pending permits, and that was it. So I, I switched how I calculate that. So it increased it by ninety thousand. And then I did the same thing with the income tax is previous years, we took what was budgeted last year, added three percent. It was the same routine, but instead I looked at what the actuals were in twenty-three and used what the, the wage and salary increases were based on the Department of Labor, and that was four point six eight percent. So I took that, I increased it four point six eight percent instead of the typical three percent.
Got it. Um, do you have a response to Councilwoman Bryant Ward's question about why with the police department, new police department, we would be budgeting a whole third on this current upcoming budget?
We have to. That was just, nobody gave me any information on it. And I know it's something that council had wanted to do. And I want to make sure that you guys are aware that this is a large cost. And it may cost five hundred thousand, and like twenty-five, but ultimately it's going to cost a lot more. And our current fund balance isn't going to cover that. And there is, and based on the expenses and the revenues, it doesn't look like we're going to have fund balance going in there to cover that future cost in those few years. And that's the reason why I wanted to make sure that it was in there. So you guys can look at a longer term that this is an expense and you want to pursue this. It's going to be an expense that's going to happen for a large expense over several years. So you don't have to put that out, but once you've started it, you want to complete that process. You don't want to have built building because you've ran out of funds.
Sure.
So I want you to make sure that you understand the true cost of that or an estimated cost of that and what we currently have.
How, like, when we looked at this list of thirty-nine, what are we to take as counsel of this list that is a vital priority from the departments? Or is there any?
Well.
I, I mean, is, is all of it vital according to each department? Okay.
Yeah. So what I did is I actually took the, everything that the departments wanted are in here except the additions. Like the additional police officer, the additional reclassifications. The I T, there has been departments that have expressed that they really want an onsite full-time I T person. And I mean, I personally agree with that myself. So what I did.
Really helpful, right? Like, hey, we've got a consensus. I think we need to make this work for our budget. You know, hearing Mr. Manuel's, you know, support or, hey, can we get by a little bit more? I mean, that's the kind of stuff that we say, okay, well, let's figure out what we can do here with this. Then we want to enable our staff and not just put our pet projects in or not and derail something that's vital.
Well, I can, based on discussions with department directors, I can tell you what finance thinks that we can afford and what they need.
Okay.
The personnel I would leave to Monica to advise on because there's several personnel in here. The only one I know is the I T has been asked for by several departments. The other item is there was several council members on the survey expressed wanting a three percent COLA. And I don't think that's unreasonable, especially with how the cost of living has been increased. However, because of the budget strength, strenuence, I, I don't know if you guys want to start adding benefits on addition to that. I mean, we, we do have a very good benefit packet right now. And that would be something that could be looked at next year to add additional benefits.
And I just want to just encourage you not to take the survey results from Council's gospel, given because.
And that's why it's still a discussion.
But yeah, yeah, I got you.
It's still a discussion.
I hear you.
The other thing is, yes, employees should be paying for part of their benefits. They, we've, the town's been covering hundred percent for a long time. But if we start making employees pay for some, we don't want to cut a COLA out, not give them a COLA and make them pay for part of their benefit.
Go ahead. But when we talk about benefits, pre-tax benefits are a lot cheaper than it, what they're actually seeing. So it's not as if they're going to be paying taxes on, they're going to be paying taxes on less income. We're giving a three percent merit. That's in, that's not great in green, that's there.
Just because it's there doesn't mean it's.
Well, but you can't say that because it's there and we're looking at it and it's not highlighted in green as optional, it's there. And so I don't know anybody that gets a six percent anything in a given year. That makes no sense to me. And, and merits are typically based upon performance. Our merits are not. They get a three percent and they can be doing a bad job and there's no encouragement to do a better job. So I don't know why we would give a three percent COLA and a three percent merit. That makes no sense to me. I hear you. I understand, but I don't know anybody that does that. And so if we look, if we want to get COLA, if that's necessary, you know, and we're talking about it, then we have to look at what percentage of a COLA we can give that wouldn't put us in further in the hole. And, and, and that's all we're asking. You know, I'm not to tell, to ask me three point seven nine percent, three percent, two percent, one percent, and not see how it, and I guess I could plug it in. I just finished my FY twenty-five budget and it wasn't fine. And so I want you to tell me if we're trying to decrease debt deficit of six hundred and sixteen thousand, what do we do to get there? What do we do as an organization, as H R, as director head, direct department heads who have to manage that department and get the work done? What can we do? What can we live without to get to the six, sixteen? I, I think we said this before and department heads walked away saying, yeah, we can do that. I don't see where that was done. If they're saying they did it, can you show us what department heads sacrificed? And to get, leave us with the numbers that are presented here.
Operationally, not capital.
Yeah, no, not talking about capital.
Yeah, there, there wasn't. And finance went through it and some of the things that we've come up with is one thing is to look at our policies. We have a sale of leave policy that costs us over a hundred thousand a year.
You have a what?
A sale of leave policy. And it costs the town over a hundred thousand a year. We could revise that policy. There's also, we've been looking at options of putting policies in place and procedures in place for purchases under twenty thousand. Previously, there is not. So we are looking at, well, what can we do to help control this cost? Make, look at contracted costs for supplies. So finance is exploring areas where we could reduce the expenses in these departments or try to reduce expenses in the departments and also look in areas of what policies are causing the town to pay out more.
And that makes perfect sense to me because we used to be a small organization. We are no longer a small organization. We are growing and expanding. So what we did for five or six employees in today's day, we cannot do it for the, the growth that we're anticipating. The study showed us how we would grow incrementally with staffing. So we cannot continue to do some of the things we do. So we would have to change policy and employees would have to understand that. And that goes with education. We would have to have something that educates them on what paying twenty percent, ten percent of their benefits would look like. Pre-tax dollars are not regular dollars, so it does help. So I think that though, looking at those policies is an excellent thing to do and would help us probably get to a better budget. And maybe we're not looking at increasing taxes. I'm still not opposed to it. I, I, I have no problem saying it because we cannot continue to carry the, the resonance of the town.
So yes, that's something we're exploring and it, you're not going to see it in this budget because we need to prepare those and evaluate them. But if you want a budget and want us to determine what's important, we can go through here and balance this budget. It's going to come out, I mean, fund balance is going to bridge it if you're not going to raise taxes. It's not going to be a large amount. We've done it in the past. But this was meant to give you guys to hear your opinions on some of the things that departments were asking for that were above and beyond what we're currently doing.
So the one thing, the last thing I'll say, Madam Mayor, and I'm sorry, the one thing I don't want to do is kick that enhanced retirement plan down the road again. I do not want to see that go into another council. That makes no sense. If we were going to kill that, we should have killed it before it got to twenty twenty-four. You know, but that has just been rolling, 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 rolling. It needs to end somewhere. If we're not going to do it, then we just need to say we're not going to do it. But if we're going to do it, it doesn't need to happen in twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-eight. It doesn't.
So Ms. Larson, something that you said when one of us was talking up here is you said, you can balance this budget. And, and that's, that's all I needed to hear is you can balance this budget. As I have said on several occasions, we've got a lot of lattes up here and we need to just cut it back. And I, I would never want to hurt our employees because they are the ones that are, are providing the services. But we need to, I mean, that's your job, that's the town manager's job. Our job per the code is to approve a budget. It's not to get into the weeds here. And we are so far into the weeds. And so, but I appreciate you having the confidence in us. Ultimately, as Councilwoman, Councilman Winkler said, we will be the bad guys. We're approving the budget. But let's, let's wait till the end for us to be the bad guys, not starting off at the beginning.
Only thing I will say, it's not going to have everything that the departments want and everything that council wants.
But it's, but it's a living document. It takes a couple meetings to change a budget through, you know, going through the proper procedures and we, I, I will speak for myself, would not deny the town something that is a nine-one-one. If it, it is essential to operate, for the operation of this town. I don't know of any of us sitting here that was going to be like, nah, no. We need to balance a budget and that's what we're here for. And that's the town manager is ultimately the one, because, because we can pick on you for, to bring us something that we have, that we can maybe say, eh, okay, we're okay with, with taking this much from fund balance or whatever, but for us to, you know, I love to get into the weeds, but this is too much for us. And this isn't our expertise. This is your expertise. So I am respectfully requesting balance the budget and then bring it to us. We heard, I loved the idea of the survey because we were able to freely express what we found as our personal priority for the town, and it was anonymous. So what didn't make it, didn't make it because there weren't at least three of us that said that. Instead of debating it back and forth. And I always hold true, if, if something's very passionate, get another, gets at least somebody else on council to agree with you. And that person gets somebody else and you've got a majority and it goes forward. So I appreciated the survey. It was a little overwhelming, but we, we set our piece on that. But please balance the budget and, and, Mr. Town Manager.
I have a note, says bring back a balanced budget.
There you go. And I don't know how we, I guess what you need tonight, which is going to be a difficult ask, is are we raising taxes? That's what your ask is tonight.
I do need to know that. But I just went in and plugged in some things. I will bring these to the department heads. And if they are okay with not having the other items over here, I can foresee that taxes don't need to be increased. However, if they are going to ask for additional items, it may be something that needs to be visited.
Well, that was very muddy.
I mean, I can balance it right now.
Right, it's not.
I mean, right now I can tell you, I mean.
Put all the green in.
Yeah, I just plugged in some numbers knowing what departments needed or wanted to help streamline some of their process or operations.
Oh, well, I think it's very important to state too, that this is not the final. Oh, I think it's very important to state too that this is not the final. This, this will, is always evolving, always evolving. If, if for some reason, the four fifty seven, the matching doesn't get in, there's a pension already in place, and the four fifty seven is already in place. It's just that matching part. If, if that needs to be revisited, then that's fine, but it is about balancing a budget. Where the final authority is far, we're signing this, we're, we're proclaiming it, you know, blessing it at the end, but you guys need to bring us a document that is able to be blessed.
Yes, I can get you one by Tuesday before we talk about the enterprise funds.
Okay.
So we're gonna, a- a- again, just echoing what Councilwoman Bryant Ward talked, Councilwoman Bryant Ward talked about. We still haven't gotten to the eight hundred pound girl in the room, and that is to set the pension. I mean,
Well, it wasn't a priority of council.
Well, I, I, again, I'm gonna respectfully disagree with the survey in question, and I'm-
The survey came out?
Well, but that doesn't mean, okay, I, I-
But that, I, I think that was the purpose of the survey, to get all of these things, and it didn't reach that level for this fiscal year. That doesn't mean it's, it's DOA.
Then it was how it was presented. It was a, it was a lack of understanding of how it was presented.
And I was also told that the survey, it didn't lock us in. I remember somebody saying that the survey is not the final notice or the final decision.
If council, if the majority of council wants a pension in, we can add the pension in, but that's gonna be an operating cost, and we're gonna have-
I mean, I already-
And either bridge it by fund balance, but I wouldn't count on that every year. Because the pension, even though it may be six percent this year, that doesn't mean it's gonna be six percent next year. It might be six point two or six point three percent, just like the Maryland State Retirement goes up each year. This is gonna go up each year to make sure the benefits that are promised are covered.
And I go back to bring us a balanced budget. And we, then we have something to work with. Um, and, and that will, I know next week we're five thirty as a closed session, so it sounds like we will start off with the general fund and have that, hopefully we'll have enough information that if there are any questions from council, that they are contacting Brent and saying, hey, this is, uh, what questions, and then he can either answer it or give it to you prior to the meeting, so that we come in with a clear, clear understanding. And then it should be a couple of questions, maybe, that have arisen, but we should know what's, what we're getting. And it should be balanced as close to what it can be. All right.
Question, um, so I think it's been expressed multiple times by multiple members of council that, um, of course, the, you know, there were items on here that nobody had heard of before, right? We have heard of the, the pension numbers. We talked last week about looking at the historical data for the cola as a question.
Yeah, it was included in the memo.
And it sounds like for the next meeting, it would be helpful, at least hearing from Councilman Jenkins to have some of the pension numbers we're discussing. Bring the balanced budget, that's fine, but we need to have a plan for what we're doing with this thing that everybody says is a priority.
So, if you want me to add the pension in, I can go ahead and add it in, and we can see.
So we, when we voted, I think the mayor, um, was the only one that said, no, we asked for options two or three. On when we had Mr. Bolton here, and we went through, and we looked at one, two, three options, the majority wanted either two or three to come back, so we would see what it looked like. So did that survey that you sent out negate that ask? Because if it did, then I'm not sure that we were all clear on what those numbers represented on the survey. I'm clear that we wanted either option two or three to be presented as an option for the budget. We went through that exercise, and I pray that that did not get negated because that was an extensive conversation, and a lot of our time, and four of us were for two or three. We wanted to see two or three, so, um, that, that cannot, and, and, and I don't want you to do it right here, right now. I want you to do it with some thought and to make sure that the effort and the intent is to do a balanced budget to get what the department heads need. But that pension plan does not need to be kicked down the road another year. And it's not to, to banter with you, I get it, you're doing the best you can, but I'm saying that that can't happen.
I, I, how many budgets do you want? Because-
We want a final one to come to us.
Put a budget with the pension in, I can put a budget with the third plan pension in, I can take it out. Because that's gonna affect, and that's the reasons for this, um, worksheet was to see, okay, this is where we're at. If you want the pension, we're gonna add plan three here. Now you're, this is where our deficits at. Are we gonna raise taxes to cover this ongoing expenses?
The other things out.
Right.
Did you take, did you take everything else out that you said you could take out before we got to a final number to say, are we gonna raise taxes?
We could take out that, but that means you're providing, and I, I don't, and I, there's probably more for HR to express. But if you take out from other employees to give certain employees a benefit and nothing to other-
I think that's the issue.
That's gonna be a personnel issue.
So, so I think that that's the issue right there. I think we're, we're going, having this broad conversation to negate having the pension, because the underlying thought is that we're taking from some employees and giving to others, and that was not the intent.
But if you want me to balance the budget, and we're gonna add four hundred thousand, four hundred and fifty thousand into the budget to provide this pension, and you want it balanced, that means I'm gonna have to take away from, pull up from everybody, but the points that I'm taking cola away from aren't getting the pension. And it's gonna, this, and again, it's more of an HR that needs to explain that that's gonna hurt your employee morale, that you're taking away to give to a set of employees. So I can do it. But the, the real look at is, is we're gonna, if you want everybody to be on the same page and make sure everybody gets a cola because of cost of living, and you're gonna add the pension, we need to fund it a different way, either fund balance, which is not recommended, or increase taxes to cover that ongoing, because it's not gonna end. Once you put that pension in, it's not gonna end, and you're gonna wanna make sure that revenue stream can sustain that pension cost.
And I think that with the four fifty seven and the three percent, that, and I, I hear everything everybody is saying about the pension. That's the first step. It may be a phase. It may be, okay, we're going to do this. And then this next cycle, we're going to do that, but we've got, we've gotta get a control on this. And we've gotta see what the, the county is going to do. If the county doesn't give us our differential, that's going to impact our, uh, residents. It, we're not raising taxes, but we are raising taxes because the county is, uh, controlling our differential. So there's an impact on that. If it has to be a phase, we're not saying, I'm not saying no to pension. I am saying balance a budget. If it has to be phased in, if we, everybody already gets a pension. They get a pension, this is enhanced. This is a, another, uh, uh, added layer to it. If it needs to be phased in, then to balance the budget, then do that. But figure, we've gotta figure out how we can do this. Otherwise, we'll never balance a budget.
The other thing we could do is if you want to have an additional benefit for employees in retirement, is to maybe do a two percent cola and a two percent four fifty seven, so that they start that way.
Was it, I would say, at some point, we have to make, at some point, we have to make a decision on which pension, this, well, let's look, let's play around and plug numbers in for option two, let's option three. Well, how about we come up with option four and completely muddy the water? I mean, I think we need to make a, before we make a decision on putting it in the budget, we need to make a decision of which plan we think is gonna be best for the, 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 the town of La Playa.
And that is, I mean-
And that's, I think that's a whole other conversation for another day.
And they have, there is a retirement, everybody pays into the retirement, there is a four fifty seven. It is as, and you might not have been on the, the beginning of this conversation, it's an enhanced retirement for our public works and for our police department, and, um, that what I hear Ms. Larson saying is, maybe we start off by doing a two percent cola and a two percent, um, uh, match for four fifty seven, that's phase one, and go on.
So Councilman Winkler, we asked, we were presented, and I think you were on the council at the time when Bolton came, that we were given three options, and we chose the lesser of the three options, options two or three, and we asked to see what it would look like added to the budget. That's why we're asking for that, because we don't-
It was never decided, not to cut you off, but it was never decided which plan we-
Exactly, because we never saw the impact.
Because I can tell you, and I, and I've made this abundantly clear, I think it's wrong that you're gonna put public facilities in with public, with the police department. They're two entirely separate, uh, uh, entities, and you, and we've already seen it. When you open the door up, everybody's gonna stick their foot in and say, now you've got to include me, and you're just, you're, all you're doing is you're opening up things for down the road to having discussions like this more and more frequently.
But people who are out doing something totally different than every other employee and they're gonna work until they're seventy and eighty.
I didn't say that you don't need to compensate public facilities based on their, uh, their, um, um, being on call, but you cannot, show me a municipality where they, where they incorporate-
The Bolton did.
Show me a municipality that incorporates public facilities and, and, uh, the police department and in the same pension.
We asked Bolton, where, where had it been done, and he brought in said that this was not against best practice. We asked for that.
But he didn't show us it.
There was no municipality he had ever heard of that had-
That had combined into, those are two separate entities.
But your answer was separate, then, I wonder, you, you-
Getting further in the weed, but I didn't. I think that's probably why there's an issue with, with moving the pension forward.
Pension, employees, depending on which plan they are, it's either, um, thirty years or, um, ninety, which is age plus work. So typically, they could retire between sixty and sixty-five, depending on what age. I mean, I'll use myself as an example. I started here when I was thirty-four. I have a full pension at sixty-two. So it's, it's not that they have to work till they're seventy or eighty. They can retire in their early sixties.
Can they live off what they retire with in their early sixties?
Well, that's what the four fifty seven would help them do, is subsidize some of the other expenses that they may have. It also gives them a variety of things, like say, um, a employee retires, everybody's gonna have their own goals, their own situation, and limiting, right now, they have the pension, the Maryland State Pension, well, what you get is what you get. But you do get a cola, which is one of the better things about the Maryland State Pension, is that there's a lot that don't have cola. Maryland does. But also having a four fifty seven can subsidize that. They can choose to use it to retire early. They can choose to work longer and have that lump sum to pay off debt, or buy an asset when they retire, or pay off their house. They have a choice, they can perhaps an annuity with it. So it doesn't put them into, well, you got this pension, you got another pension, but you have to fit in this box. You, you don't have a choice on what you want to do. And the four fifty seven also is an age limit. It's the four fifty seven, if the employee leaves the town, now can withdraw from their four fifty seven. It's not like a four oh three B or four oh one K where you have to be fifty-nine and a half.
All right, Mr. Manuel, you heard our marching orders, right? Very clear, did you, were you able to capture them?
It was clear as mud, yes.
Wait, do we have, uh, Mr. Manuel, do you have any parting words?
Thank you for coming out.
All right, with that said, um, I move to adjourn this meeting. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Oh, thank you. Uh, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, okay, meeting adjourned at seven oh five PM. We'll see you next Tuesday, same, uh, same time, same back channel there.
Uh, council members, just, uh, as a reminder, I will be attending the mi- the meeting online and virtually, okay? But I'll be there.